Good evening, welcome to the August 5th, 2019, meeting of the Mashpee Board of Selectmen. We'll call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start the meeting with a moment of silence tonight in memory of the, I don't know, the number keeps moving, 31 people killed over the course of the weekend. Maybe after a moment of silence, we could all maybe use our voices a little bit to sort of tone down the anger, the rhetoric, and the hate, because that's clearly contributing to what's going on in the country. And I think we've been silent long enough. Taking a motion on the minutes of Monday, July 15, 2019, Joint Regulatory Meeting, Board Meeting, and Monday, July 22 regular session.
I'll move.
Your second?
Second.
Any comment, changes?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, public comment, Mr. McKelvey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome back, Tom.
Thank you, it's good to be back.
Just want to follow up from my last week's, two weeks ago's comments about the document of the 24th regarding the financial numbers that were sent forth by the financial team to this committee toward the sewer project, which is a total, they totaled up to about $500 billion. I met with Chairman Gottlieb, we had a very good and productive meeting. He explained to me some very interesting things regarding assumptions and how, you know, he believes that the assumptions, just talked about, used a different set of assumptions than he would have used and understood the numbers differently. Of course, he has some expertise in this, and I appreciate him educating me, helping me understand those numbers and looking at them. But in the end, regardless of what type of assumptions you use, whether you're using the town, the financial team's assumptions or other assumptions, we're still, I believe, guessing at a total cost of the project down the road. There's still not a fixed number of what this is going to cost the town. And there's been a lot of talk about it, no one's doubting the fact that needs, something needs to be done, something needs to be moving. But I think that until we can understand those numbers, it's fair to the taxpayer of this town to understand what those numbers are before we go forward with any more money to be spent until we know what we're spending it on, long term. I hope you'll continue to look for creative solutions, cooperations with others, and understand as much as we need affordable housing in Mashpee, we need an affordable sewer solution as well. One more thing I just want to talk to, since you were gone, Tom, we have a little tornado wind blow thing here through Mashpee, and I just wanted to thank the first responders. I live in the New Seaberry, Popanestet area, they came out, very helpful and cooperative with all the residents. The one issue that really came up and really shined was the lack of any type of emergency service to be able to get through on a cellphone. No one could contact anybody. It was a mess and it was chaotic, and if this doesn't point to the fact that we need a cellphone tower in that end of town after this emergency, nothing will. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we started early tonight, we have a presentation by Mr. Leonard from Wright Pierce, executive summary of the Joint Base Cape Cod Waste Water Management Plan. Just by way of background, town has been participating with the adjoining communities under two state grants to provide, guys, we done? To provide some guidance to the towns around the base, exploring the potentials that exist for the base to become a source of a jointly run wastewater facility. Mr. Collins has been our representative on that working group of the various town managers from the four, now five towns, inclusive of Barnstable. And so, Mr. Leonard's in, doing a bit of a roadshow for the town, participating towns, briefing the respective boards of selectmen for the first time on what the findings are. And so, I believe you're headed to another town to give this presentation again, which is why we started at 6:00 tonight. So without further ado, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, thanks for having me here tonight. With me tonight is Lou Ragazzino with our Rhode Island office, he's been involved in some of our Cape initiatives and a little bit on this project as well. So as Mr. Gottlieb said, we have been working on this for a little bit, a couple of years now, two grant phases, and I wanted to give you a little bit of regional context and then jump into, right into what the project has consisted of. So DEP had identified that there are a lot of coastal abeyments that had nitrogen-related problems back in the late 1990s, early 2000s, and established the Massachusetts Estuaries Project and produced total maximum daily load reports for many watersheds. There was a bunch of work on that, then of course, there was a CLF lawsuit, settlement agreement that prompted the Cape Cod Commission to do its 208 plan. And through that process, all the towns identified significant wastewater management needs, which were significantly larger than the available capacity for wastewater treatment on the Cape in any of the individual areas. The joint base facility, or the treatment plant at the Joint Base Cape Cod has been discussed for over a dozen years as a potential option for folks. The benefit of this facility is that if you, in the upper right of this figure, shows something from the Cape Cod Commission's 208 plan with the watersheds highlighted in red are the ones that have TMDLs. And so you can see the yellow star, which is where the treatment plant is, is right in the, right in those needs areas. And the green star is where effluent disposal is, which is in a watershed that is not nitrogen sensitive. So the Upper Cape towns have had a long history of working together, they were successful in getting a grant from the Commonwealth, an efficiency and regionalization grant, that the participants originally consisted of, Bourne, Falmouth, Mashpee, Sandwich, the base itself, and Mass Development. We worked through, basically the purpose of the project was to say, okay, people seem to think Joint Base Cape Cod would be a great regional solution, what does that look like? How much flow are we talking about, how big of a facility, what's it going to cost, what do we need for permits, things like that. We developed that project report in November 2017, we got input from DEP and the Cape Cod Commission along the way, as well as each of the participants. And at the end of that, the group concluded that it was a good idea to keep planning. It was, it had enough advantages to keep planning. So we developed a grant, or the towns developed a grant proposal to extend that and to really focus on the key implementation related issues like permitting, specific permits, where we needed easements, what funding financing mechanisms might be available, how the organization would be run, and effluent disposal is really one of the major focuses. So going back at the beginning, we said, how much flow do each of the towns need? And so we asked each of the towns, short term, midterm, long term, and then sewage, septicage, or just treated effluent. Some of the towns have treatment plants and want just the ability to put their effluent in a, in a less sensitive location. So we got those numbers and added them all up, and the chart on the right shows you that the existing condition is really low, the flows are really low at that treatment facility. As you get out to the midterm and the long term, the requested flows are over 10 times what the existing facility is rated for. So the significant key conclusion from that first effort is that we really need a new treatment plant that's significantly larger in order to accommodate the flow. There is some residual capacity, and that was identified by Mashpee and its watershed nitrogen management plan as an opportunity for some of its flow, and those numbers were included in here. So Joint Base Wastewater System itself is owned by the Air Force and operated by the 102nd Air National Guard, is 36 miles of sewers, the original wastewater system was built prior to World War II to support 70,000 troops. Since then, the population of the base has dramatically decreased, the treatment facility was, the original one was mothballed and a smaller one was built. It's located in the southeast corner of the base, and there's an 11-mile force main that goes to the northwest corner of the base, right next to the canal, for rapid infiltration basins. So a couple of key conclusions from the base, one is there's plenty of land available to construct a treatment plant, so that's not, not an issue. Effluent disposal is a really key component, and if we can't secure additional effluent, permitted effluent disposal capacity, a regional concept here isn't really very viable. It's, it's not, it's limited, we'll say. So 22,000 acre base, why would there be limited effluent disposal capacity? Just a couple of quick slides, there's an awful lot of color on this, but bear with me. The hatched areas are the Zone 2 watershed protection areas. The polygon shapes are contamination plumes from historic base activities. And the whole tan area in the middle of the base is the Upper Cape Regional Water Supply Reserve, which is managed, it's a managed area by the Environmental Management Commission, which is a state entity. So a lot of issues to work around there. When you overlay nitrogen sensitivity on top of that, many of the watersheds on the base are nitrogen sensitive, as I also showed in that earlier slide. So if you overlay contamination, watershed protection, and coastal abeyment protection, you really end up with about 100 acres of land that's available in the northwest corner of the base, right near where the existing disposal beds are. And about, most of that land is owned by the Army Corps, not the base. So there's some challenging issues there in terms of getting additional effluent disposal capacity. We did identify a number of different effluent disposal methods that are viable and allowed under Mass General Law, the conventional land-based disposal, as well as a surface water discharge to the Cape Cod Canal. And this is, again, is treated effluent, highly treated effluent, it's not, well, it's highly treated effluent. So securing this permitted capacity is really the first step to making this a viable alternative, or a viable opportunity. We, as a part of this grant scope, we had a workshop with over, I think it was attended by about 40 people, many of the towns were there, EPA was, EPA, DEP, the Army Corps, the Upper Cape Regional Water Supply Cooperative, Coastal Zone Management, I'm forgetting people, Environmental Management Commission, Buzzer Bay Coalition, there's probably more. But we wanted to get key stakeholders in the room to discuss these issues and to get them to at least put on the table anything that looked like it might be a permitting challenge. Everybody said, there's plenty of permitting challenges associated with this, but none of them seem insurmountable. DEP then went the next step and wrote a letter to the group saying, thanks for the presentation, we understand the challenges, we've talked to our folks, and we feel like getting that capacity is something that the DEP can support and feels is viable. There's still a lot of work to get there, but there seems to be some support and no insurmountable issues. So we're calling this the candidate plan. It's not a recommended plan, it's not a proposed plan, we developed an alternatives analysis and looked at six different alternatives for treatment, disposal type, disposal location, and this is really what stuck to the wall at the end of it. So each community would build conveyance from their collection system to the Joint Base system. We construct a new, a single new, much larger treatment facility, construct additional transport piping, the 11 miles to get to the northwest corner of the base, construct one or more different types of effluent disposal based on what we can obtain for permits. We did look at the cost differential between the different types of disposal, and they're all in the same ballpark. So when you take that candidate plan, assemble the costs, it's about $155 million for the four Upper Cape towns, and it's about $230 million if you include Barnstable. So what that number includes is the stuff that's part of the regional entity, and it does not include the collection systems that each town will need to build to generate the sewage. So in Mashpee's case, you'll have to build sewers that will get it to the conveyance lift station, and then apply your portion of the cost to that. It also doesn't include maintenance of the existing JBCC collection system, which is a consideration for whoever takes over the facility ultimately. So the key factor really isn't whether it costs $154 million or $10, it's whether it's cost effective when you compare it to what your options are on your own. So to facilitate that discussion, we developed a conceptual cost allocation model, and then used that to determine whether we thought the plan was cost effective. We worked with GHD, but part of our proposal for this regional evaluation was to work with, to try and hit this issue of cost effectiveness. So we proposed and we teamed with GHD to provide that service on this project. And it was a challenging effort, I think, for GHD to look at this apple versus your plan, but ultimately, in working with Jeff Gregg, we concluded that if you look at, if you really, if you tease out the apples to apples in this thing, that it is cost effective for Mashpee to pursue this when compared with working on its own. I know you have a back, traditional backup plan, back, you have to help me with it, back is a, you have a separate site for an MBR treatment plant if JBCC doesn't work, or if...
Backroad site.
Backroad, thank you. So when compared to that, this is more cost effective. It is, there's, it's more cost effective in the short term, and then in the, in the long term, this plan will cost you slightly more than was estimated in the watershed nitrogen management plan, because in that case, Mashpee was the sole participant with the residual capacity. In this case, it's a regional facility and others are looking for that residual capacity as well. So an important takeaway here for Mashpee as a participant is, how do, how might this candidate plan be modified to determine if it's exactly what you want and if it's still cost effective? And really, that's the case for each of the participants. So this is, this conclusion is based on the scale for everybody, taking the total cost and then allocating it out. So the general conclusion is it's cost effective for all towns, better than working alone, independently, in that there continue to be sufficient advantages for planning this So this is a complicated process, I think it was, like I said, it was brought up probably more than 10 years ago, and it hasn't happened because it's complicated. There's four towns or five towns, depending on who signs up, there's the base, there's county facilities there, there's different stakeholders, and there's different regulatory agencies that all have oversight on this. It will take a fair amount of time to fully build out a regional solution. It's taken Chatham, it's close to a decade now to build their plant, plus all the sewers to get to that higher flow rate that's closer to their permit. So we're projecting this could take eight to 10 years to get to a build out. Now, there is residual capacity, as I said, and that could be available in as short as probably one to three years. But this, this whole discussion really needs to mature a bit further before any decisions would be made on that. So there's a number of recommended action items, first and foremost is that securing additional permitted capacity, having each town do their own assessment of cost effectiveness, building on the work that has been done as a part of this report, collectively determining as the four or five towns what the right timeline is for moving this thing forward, is it fast, or is it slow, or somewhere in between? Securing additional funding for planning activities, and then facilitating a transition from the existing condition. We know that the 102nd and the Air Force are actively trying to divest themselves of the base in the near term, and so that, that will play out some information as well. So this report, which will be made available, once we complete the presentations to the four select boards, so by the middle of the month will be available for folks to read and digest. It's really intended to be a roadmap for how to get to a regional solution if everybody is interested in it. And then we, we had some discussions with the, with the towns about having it be a, having an intermissible agreement in place to facilitate the planning and partnership of, of trying to get to that point. So with that, I would open it up to any questions?
Any members of the board have any questions?
So far, the towns that you've discussed this with, what is there, are they excited? Are they interested? Are they interested, the different towns that you've gone to?
Well, we've, you're the second town, we went to Sandwich last Thursday, they were quite interested.
Okay.
And Falmouth is later tonight.
And I'm sure, and I'm sure there'll be many more meetings?
Yes.
With the towns, okay.
Tom, go ahead.
So, a couple of questions, and I, this is exactly what I, I thought this was going to happen, and I hoped that this would happen, I thought this would be the answer to all of our problems in wastewater, and it's going to take a lot of work, and I agree. The existing plant, we've been told, or I have been told over the years, I've been looking at this for the last 10 years, between the advisory committee and whatnot, the different, the Air Force as well, and they thought that the plant, the waste, the existing plant was underused to roughly around 30% of capacity, and they thought that it was worthwhile saving. You think it's better, and I understand moving with a newer facility for all of us, but in the interim, could we, could we tie into that and use that facility to get us up and running, and if they were in a parallel location, that you could swap it and pull it over to the, to the new plant?
Yes.
And that would work?
Yep.
Secondly, when you looked at the, when you looked at the plan overall, there are a couple of wastewater treatment plants within the town, and the discharge is just not in the right location. Is that something that's been included into the, the numbers, that if we could redirect that, their discharge, their effluent, and, and push it through? I don't know if we'd have to go through the treatment again, or if it just be redirected, it's going into a river that just doesn't flow.
So when I show the, the chart with the flows on it, we, we asked each town to give us what we called the study basis, we needed to pick one set of numbers to develop the costs and the sizing and say, see what it said. But we also asked for the low end projection and a high end projection. And Mashpee's high end projection, I think, was 800,000 gallons a day. That weather, and I, that request was for sewage, so that would be more sewage from future phases of construction, but there's nothing to say that you couldn't send treated effluent over that way as well. It would just need to be worked into the cost, the cost, and then the cost model, and then the towns would need to determine whether it was cost effective.
So treated definitely.
Right. But that's really a key factor in this, is we, every, the original premise was, it's, you got to be able to make it work. And, and now we know how big it would need to be, and what it would, roughly what it would cost for a certain set of input criteria. So if each town says, eh, I want a little bit more flow than that, then we would need to rerun the numbers and see what the totals would be. But I would expect, the bigger the facility becomes, the more cost effective it will be, based on economies of scale.
I agree. And a final question, had you thought about any, I know it's up to the towns to come to an agreement here, but have you come up with a plan that you think might work best? Would it be a coordination of the four towns, or would they hire a management team to operate the plant separately from the towns, but under the directions of the, of the town managers or the boards?
We looked at a couple of different, we identified a handful of different ways to do it. It could be a single town that takes it over with customer agreements, it could be a district that's set up, a regional district, there's a bunch of them on the North Shore that operate in a similar capacity. We also identified a joint powers agreement, which has been used off Cape in the past for similar situations, which would essentially be, each of the participating towns would have a seat at a body that governs that organization. So there's a whole chapter on that in there.
A little work to be done on that, but it's certainly doable.
It's definitely doable, and each of the towns have had some input on that, and I think that there was a preference towards a district or a joint powers agreement, but again, that no decisions have been made on that, it's just part of the roadmap.
Now, this is, this is great news, it's the news I was hoping to hear, so that's...
I do. So as far as the Army Corps of Engineers, if my understanding is for the discharge up north, the north part of the base, they've been in the loop, and they're still in agreement that this is a plausible action that can take place, and...
They, what are the words they used? They, they understood the, the importance of that land to this potential initiative. They, they said, we have a process when it comes to transferring land, and you have to go through the process, you have to look at existing uses, potential uses, it's a, there's a process to go through. So I wouldn't say if everybody decided to start tomorrow that they'd be right on board, but there's a process to go through, and they said, we don't hear anything that sounds like it couldn't happen. That was the, the no insurmountable issues.
Okay. And by looking at the map, as far as, when you're looking at working with discharge and wastewater with all these different towns, are you saying that all of Mashpee, according to this plan, would be able to hook up or connect to all this? Or what percentage of town did you use for your...
Sure. We, the, the number, the numbers that's in the study basis is 200,000 gallons a day, which was what, the exact amount that was included in the watershed nitrogen management plan for, I'm not sure what phase it was, but it was...
So you just took the west side of, west side of town, the Phase 2 initial load for Quashna River and moved it over there as was considered in the plan?
Correct.
This doesn't look at picking up any of the Popanestet Bay watershed load?
No. Right, correct. It could, it could, I mean, there's nothing there now, so it's really a case of, I think we had, we did have that discussion, and Mashpee said, Rodney said if, well, if it was cost effective, our upper end would be significantly higher, and the number that we put in was 800,000 gallons a day. So we didn't, we didn't come up with what that facility size would be, or what the capital cost of the facility overall for every town's high end, we did the study basis, but it's, it is possible.
Excuse me, do you mind if I follow? In the amount that's contemplated in here, this is actually just taking exactly what was in our plan as it currently exists, which is to take the west side of town to the base, nothing more, nothing less than that.
Correct.
So maybe this, this is a question maybe for you, but, so, or the town manager, what percentage of the town are we talking about? You say 200,000, that, to me, and probably everybody in the audience probably has no idea what that means.
Western third of town, basically, it's Quashna River watershed, it's our share of the Popanestet, or the Aquoit Bay load, so basically, you know, from, from Aquoit Bay, north up, as far up to John's Pond as the plan requires us to go in order to meet the objectives of the plan. It's not that much of town. So this plan, as it's currently presented, leaves the entire Popanestet Bay requirements alone, and if we followed this model, we'd still be in a position of having to manage the Popanestet Bay watershed nitrogen load as contemplated in the plan we have now, which is a, which is a treatment plan at the transfer station.
Correct.
So this is not, this is nothing...
It's not a cure all.
...different than what's in our current plan. Just so everybody knows, this is just bringing life to what our current plan says we're going to do, which is take the Quashna River watershed load up to the base. And if we wanted to go bigger, we'd have to go bigger and scrap the other part, but this, as discussed here, this does nothing to deal, to change what our obligations and needs are on the east side of town.
Right, so...
Go back.
And that's, that's similar to what the other towns did as well. The other towns looked at, what are my Phase 1 needs, or what, how we, how might we reconfigure the plan? But generally, everybody stuck within the confines of their CWMP or CWRMP to see what the regional solution would look like.
But this is regional, small scale for us.
So the other question would be is, so if, so if right now our parcel, our percentage is only the 200,000 gallons, right, then where would we be if we wanted to further that discussion in saying, what if we went to 400,000, what if we went to 600,000, is that, is that in discussions, or has it been, and may, I don't know if that's a, you, town manager's been in the meeting, so I'm not sure.
That has not been specifically discussed, because what we wanted to do is have each town provided with the opportunity to hear the preliminary report, and obviously, this started out with Falmouth, Sandwich, Mashpee, and Bourne, and Barnstable jumped on board within the past year. And Barnstable jumped on board within the past year. So, one of the critical aspects to this is how many towns are going to stay interested in this.
And then, if certain towns would fall off, I would say that, I'm guessing that we could add presence?
Oh, definitely, yeah. I mean, this, right now, this is a, this is a paper study that's trying, that's serving as a roadmap to determine what the real thing would be. So, if Mashpee wanted to do the next, if, the next step in this is to firm up effluent disposal, based on a set of, a feedback on what the size of the facility should be. So, if each town, if half the town say, "We want more," and the other half say, "We want less," then we would rerun the numbers and tell everybody what the numbers say.
So, that being said, when, when is, when are the towns expected to say, "Yeah, we're in, but we're looking at less. Yeah, we're in, but we're looking to take as much as you can handle?" Is there a timeframe?
There's not, there's not a firm timetable at this point. We know that the base is going through its divestiture attempt, I guess I'd call it. Their desire to divest proposals are due at the end of September for that. I expect they're going to review them quickly. That would tell us who the next owner of that facility might be. And then, it would be appropriate for the towns to think about getting together and developing the scope that they want to address, for the next, basically, the next iteration on this, to fine-tune flow rates and cost estimates.
So, those meetings are still ongoing with the town managers?
That is correct. We, we're at the point, and Ed's got a lot of patience, because he's been at these meetings where we haven't really been able to give him any definitive direction. Obviously, we're not the policymakers. And so, I admire his patience. And each town has had some different interests when we've been at the table having discussions. I know Falmouth's interest is, and I don't want to speak for them, but they're interested in discharge, and we have some other interests. But I also want to commend publicly Julian, the manager in Falmouth, because he secured the grant with us.
So, let me put a more finer point on what Ed was not willing to say. While we screwed around for 10 years talking about the base, the base has been actively looking to get rid of the treatment plant. And so, they are at the final stages of disposing of it. So, relatively soon, it will no longer be a federal facility under the control of 102nd. It's either going to go to the town of Barnstable, who's the lead town on this thing, or it's going to go to a private VC firm that's going to run it on a profit-making basis. And so, I think the towns are at the point where, we either collectively or individually make a statement that we have interest in taking on the facility that's convincing enough to convince the federal government to turn it over to one or all of us, or it's going to go somewhere else, and then the option's gone.
Right.
So, we've screwed around with this for a really long time, and you're now at the point where, if they're taking final proposals in September, that's it. So, it's time to, it's time to either decide we're in, or decide we're out. And if we're out, then we're building another treatment plant at Back Road on town property with the butters. So, you've seen how that's gone at the transfer station. So, think about that when you think about what you want to do with this.
Exactly. Go ahead. Couple of sub-questions. Now, I know that there are at least two of the other communities that are looking to just, it's basically discharge. They're not looking for treatment. And I know Bourne is kind of more than, basically, it's only half of the town, the smaller of the half, that actually needs the, any treatment at all. I don't know where Sandwich is at, but we, for the most part, Mashpee, we need an abundance of treatment and discharge. So, with that being said, does, is the permit for discharge, would allow us to do more treatment at the, at the base for ourselves, if no one else is using it? And use that, part of it is, and there's enough room for discharge for the town of Mashpee with all of its needs? Is that something that's possible? It seems like the others just need it for discharge, for the most part.
I'm going to let, you can answer, say what you want, and then I'm going to recognize Brian Dudley from DEP, who's going to write the permit.
Yeah, right. It becomes a complicated permit when you have a bunch of different facilities. Anything more than one facility is, makes for a tricky permit to write. We're already contemplating that this will be a tricky permit to write, because two of the, two of the parties want to discharge treated effluent. I think in terms of what the size would be, and what the flow rate would be, it's really about determining that now. You know, so now Mashpee knows, at the flow rate that you had in your plan, it's, this is cost-effective, when, including when you compare it to, as a regional facility versus acting alone. And so, if you want more capacity, I'd say that's something that we would want to put in, in the next round, the next iteration, in terms of the actual permit itself, and how that might be written, or another part of the question you want to address?
Thank you for recognizing me. There are a couple of things involved in the overall permitting. And right now, the most critical
Pull into the mic, eat it.
Right now, the most critical element is determining what the disposal capacity can be. And once we determine the maximum disposal capacity, then, as Ed said, there's plenty of room to expand the plant to accommodate treatment up to that level. So, we're in discussions with Wright Pierce right now, in terms of what a scope of work would be, to evaluate disposal capacity within the 100 acres that have been identified. And then, I think, from there, it's just a question of parsing that capacity among the potentially five towns. I agree that, you know, Falmouth, right now, is primarily looking for effluent disposal. Bourne, right now, is looking for disposal for treated leachate from their landfill. But given economies of scale and needs, that could change as well, and they actually may be looking for treatment at some point down the road. That's not what they're saying now, but that could change. And then, as far as Barnstable, Sandwich, and Mashpee is concerned, all indications are that all three towns are looking for treatment and disposal. So, the first, the first thing, the critical step, is determining what that maximum disposal is. And then, from there, the rest of it will fall into place in terms of the scope and magnitude of the treatment system.
So, Brian, you recently, department recently put out a letter in response to this conversation, referencing a potential upside discharge amount at the north end of the base. Do you see that sufficing to meet the needs of the combination of the five communities, as it's currently understood through their planning period?
Well, I, I think there's a very good chance that we can do that. You know, traditionally, when we look at disposal capacity, we're looking at subsurface disposal. So, that will be, I think, part of the primary evaluation, and we'll look and see what it, what that result comes out to be, and what the maximum is. And, you know, the reality is, is that it's so close to the canal right now, for all intents and purposes. It goes straight into the canal. And, you know, there have been changes to the Ocean Sanctuaries Act that open up the possibility of a surface water discharge. It's a rigorous process. It requires very highly treated effluent, and it requires a very, very rigorous study in terms of impacts. And it's certainly not guaranteed to be a successful alternative. But it is something that can be evaluated. And, you know, frankly, it also opens up, when we talk about maximum capacity, if you're not limited by what you're discharging to the ground, it does open up potentially more disposal, provided that, you know, all the other environmental considerations are met as part of that evaluation.
Sound good.
Brian, so, so, just to backtrack a little bit to the beginning of what you were saying. So, if we entered into the agreement, and, you know, we're all in at, at a starting point of 200,000, then, per se, you mentioned about, we could always expand it, even the already newly expanded system. Could we expand it even further to handle 400,000 to 600,000? Is that something, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Does that possibility exist?
Yeah, I mean, right now, at the existing plant, there's probably about 200,000, roughly about 200,000 gallons of excess capacity. If a new plant is built to accommodate, let's say, up to five towns, it is going to have, it is going to require a new plant. And if that plant is predicated on, say, 200,000 right now from Mashpee, but there, you know, there is a desire in the future to consider expansion of that, the plant always can be designed modularly, so that you can have additional treatment trains or added on to accommodate additional flow. So, the treatment capacity really, in my mind, and I think, Ed, you'd agree, is not the limiting factor here. You know, other than the cost. The real limiting factor is how much effluent we can dispose.
Discharge.
And so, in a situation like this, where you've got a 40-year horizon for implementing, according to the figure you showed, and let's say you were going up to five or six MGD, you wouldn't build six MGE capacity in years one through 10, if you're not going to use it till years 30 through 40, right?
Correct. But I would advocate for trying to get the discharge permit.
Right. But in terms of the construction costs associated with the hard facility,
Right.
You're going to build that over time, which spreads that cost out over time.
Yep.
Right? And so, the other feature of this is, depending on how these systems respond, you may or may not need to go to the full bore that's contemplated in the plan, regardless of wherever it happens. So, you know, you look at these numbers, and you go, "Oh, that's a lot of money today, divided by the number of people we're talking about." But by the time the last segment of this is done, I suggest that most of us will be long dead, and not paying the bill. And it's going to get phased in over a really lengthy period of time. So, we've got to look at what the chunks are, and whether, you know, if we're doing this, do we do this? Because what's been proposed to us tonight is completely within the confines of our existing program. Or do we expand it to include the east side of town, and make a decision that we don't want to adhere to the plan as we currently have it, and look to the base as our solution, period, for treatment and disposal?
To your, to your point, it's like, it's at the base, and there are no butters. And if we can step up the treatment of the wastewater, come up with an effluent that's going to be less harmful to the environment, we probably can increase the discharge. So, I mean, I think it's the way to go. From my point, I'd rather put my money at that location. And it's just, it's a step at a time anyway, like you say. And we can start here, and we can continue, and build it in a modular fashion, and add to it, and increase the treatment, so that we come up with a better effluent, and maybe allow more gallonage, greater discharge.
On that happy note, let me, I want to ask you a question, because I know you have to go to Falmouth.
Well, I was going to defer and say, out of respect for Ed's attendance at Falmouth, and I don't want to get into trouble with Falmouth by him being late.
Not now.
So, is, are there any other questions for him? And then, you can ask me whatever you would like.
No, I think we can let, are you okay? You guys good?
I'm fine. I'm good.
I think we can let Ed go. You wait. You wait. I want to know what your thoughts are, and what you've talked to the other managers are, in terms of next steps for this. Because I think, no matter what we do, we need to make some decision that we're going to stick with and direct staff to try to implement. Especially, given the fact that we have to present, we have to allow Barnstable, who's the lead applicant for this facility, to make a reasonable representation, that they have a underlying basis that justifies federal government turning this facility over to them. If we choose to talk about this till October, that ship sails. So, what are we, you're going around talking, you've got third one tonight after us, and then you're hitting
Bourne tomorrow.
Bourne tomorrow. What about Barnstable?
They haven't asked me to come yet.
Okay. So, what's next?
I think they're thinking September.
And when are we in a decision-making? When do we have to declare ourselves?
In terms of the declaration, sooner rather than later. I need clear direction, so that instead of going back to my counterparts, and really not having any direction as to whether or not this is going to be the priority, or whether or not Phase One is going to be the priority, or whatever it is, I think I need some clear direction.
So, if not tonight, then?
I certainly wouldn't expect it tonight, because I know that there's a lot to absorb. But as far as what the future holds, I think I'd like to have a sit-down with my colleagues and find out how their meetings went. We've actually had some very productive meetings, actually, right here in this room. And we will continue those. But we need some direction from you folks, and from the respective boards, or, in Barnstable's case, it's a council. Where are we going?
Okay.
I think at this point, we're all interested.
Well, we have to be more than interested.
Well, yeah, I mean
I mean, being interested isn't good enough. We have to
I'd put a deposit on this plan.
Huh?
I'd put a deposit on this plan.
And we have to make, we have to give a clear guidance to everybody involved on our end, what we're investing, what we're committing to investing in, what we're committing to being willing to bring to town meeting, to get people to spend money to vote on, or we're just continuing to yammer about this. And so, we need to make a decision. It doesn't have to be tonight, but I think it's important that maybe this presentation gets shared with the sewer commission, so that they're aware of, more fully aware of what's been going on. This is the first time we've seen this, making fairness to the commission, in the 15 years that they've put into this, that that's more than warranted.
And I know the chairs here, and there was no disrespect intended. I was just trying to make sure that it went to the board first.
Right. But I think we need to circle back and have that, and if we need to have a special meeting just to take this up, we'll do a special meeting to just take this up, and do it soon. But I think, you know, so, let's let Ed go. And thank you for sharing this information with us. I think clearly you've piqued our interest in it. And I think that, you know, we have a number of things we're going to be talking about on the warrant, none of which we should necessarily ironclad decide tonight. But, you know, this is a timely conversation.
Good. All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Ed. Brian, thank you for coming, too. We'll drag you back another time. All right. Let's, when we, we'll tick this back up a little bit when we talk about the warrant. So, I'm going to do the public hearing, we're continuing some public hearing. We started at an odd time, there may, is there anybody here who came intending to speak in public comment, that did not get an opportunity to do so?
I'm going to ask.
Okay. Why don't you, because we started at a funny time, why don't you come forward and do that? I know that some people had intended to come and got thrown by our change in schedule and didn't notice it.
I'm not really sure how all this works.
You talk, we listen. We like to give people a couple minutes. If there's something more that requires some conversation, we're happy to schedule you for another appointment, to come in, where we can have a back-and-forth. We just basically receive information on public comment.
No dialogue.
My name is Rebecca Oakley. I live on Route 130. And I'm here to discuss the ongoings of the La Plaza del Sol motel. I'm here to discuss and ask questions of their permitting, the bylaws, the regulations, the fact that they are a public nuisance to all the surrounding neighbors, and how we go about bringing this to everyone's attention and having something done about it.
Okay. What I'm going to suggest, then, is since it requires some back-and-forth What I'm going to suggest, then, is since it requires some back-and-forth, and we're not prepared to do that tonight, that call the office Monday, tomorrow morning, set up a time, we'll give you a time, talk, lay out what you want, specifically what you want us to be prepared to talk about, we'll advertise it, do it on August 19th, at which point we can have a more informed conversation. But because it's public comment, we're not in a position, because it hasn't been noticed, able to have a real conversation with you. It alerts us to the fact we need to do it. But we'll come back and have you come in on the 19th, and we can have a full and fair conversation about what your concerns are.
Okay.
All right, so if you can call Town Manager's office tomorrow, we'll give you a set time and let them know what you want us to have in front of us in order to be able to know what you, deal with, what you want us to deal with.
Yeah. He has several emails from last year also that he can refer to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. All right. We're going to go back to public hearing on Wisconsin Island Road parking limitations that we initiated two weeks ago. And maybe I turn to the manager, if there's anything you want to update us on that's transpired in the last couple of weeks, they'll help us through this conversation.
I think we might have some folks who are here to comment on it. As far as correspondence, there was some additional correspondence.
I didn't have the mic on. There was some additional correspondence received by our office that you should have distributed to you this evening. There may be some folks in the audience that want to make some public comments. As far as the stickers are concerned, I believe the landing is $5, and I think the, obviously, the transfer station, which is the most expensive, would get the person there as well as a recycling sticker, which is less. The town does have non-resident moorings. And I know that we've been peppered with some questions regarding why are non-residents receiving moorings? That's just the way the laws are, according to what we've been told through the Office of the Harbor Master. So it's basically a waiting list, and whether you're a resident or a non-resident, you can receive a mooring permit when it's your turn. People are obviously entitled to their mooring if they've reached that point, but they're not entitled to a parking spot. But I trust that there's probably some folks in the audience who are non-residents who would say, well, what about us if we have a mooring? We do not have a so-called mooring parking permit right now, but that's something that the board could consider in addition to the permits that we've already had or the stickers that we already have. That's where we're at.
Okay. Show of hands, just to engage how we're going to do this. How many people want to speak in the public hearing on the parking? Okay, four or five. All right. What I ask you to do, I'm happy, the purpose of public hearing is to hear from the public. So I'm happy to give everybody, I'd ask you, in the interest of time, try and keep your comments brief. If somebody else has said something you intend to say, just say, indicate that, try not to repeat it, and we'll start in front. If you could, anybody who wants to speak, come up and just name your name and address and give you a couple of minutes.
Thank you very much for hearing us tonight.
Thank you, Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager. So my name is Paul Colala. I have a summer resident at 15 Bayview Road and have been since 1968. My parents and grandparents lived on the island, they grew up summers on the island. So I have some historical perspective. So our sleepy little island isn't sleepy anymore. And, you know, we had a marvelous beach there. We always called it the bay. And of course, in 1972, when the state raised the road so that we, indeed, weren't an island anymore every time there was a storm, it cut down the beaches considerably.
Speak into them.
If you can just...
Pull, just talk close.
You've got to get it really close.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is that better?
Yes.
I'm just shy. So anyway, so the beach is there, it's a beautiful beach, and we have enjoyed it, our children have enjoyed it, people enjoy it. Parking is, has been a real problem. And exacerbated by the number of permits, mooring permits that are given out. And I understand that, you know, when I was a kid, there was about one boat in the bay. Now there's a lot of boats. And I understand that Falmouth has a long list, and people come to Mashpee because it's a shorter list, and they can get a mooring quicker. And we have a number of people that go to Washburn Island and park overnight. And whether they're residents or not, I don't think most of them are residents. If you did a survey, and we've been doing it, my lovely wife has been conducting a survey, you'll find that maybe of the cars, 12 to 14 to 15, there may be a third of the cars at most that are owned by Mashpee residents, many Falmouth residents, they have Falmouth stickers, you know, parked there. And, you know, we can't go to the Falmouth beaches, we can't go anyplace near the Falmouth beaches without a permit, and we should protect our tax-paying citizens, I think. And I think you're ready to do it. The parking, the parking problem is sort of a little bit confusing because what we begin to see is the whole causeway is loaded with cars, and last week they were parked on a curb, very dangerous. There's a couple of, you know, parking, no parking signs on that side of the road, which were put there by the Conservation Department, I don't know how many years ago, because the marsh comes quite close. But, you know, there should be parking signs. Whenever a solution is made, the DPW should be involved and put parking signs so people don't park all the way up and down Bayview and Riverside Road. And the other problem is, of course, is that the boats on the beach, and I think that, I believe you're trying to address that with the signs. But the other thing is if there are parking signs there for resident only, then the police are going to have to enforce it, you know? So it takes a combination, as you know, you know, your department and, of course, you know, the Harbor Master. And, you know, I hope that there's some consideration about the number of permits that can be given out, mooring permits for Walk White Bay, because otherwise the problem is just going to grow and grow and grow. So anyway, thank you for your time.
You.
My wife has asked you, did I let you know that the guardrails have those wires and they're rusted off, and, you know, that's a hazard as well.
She's rolling her eyes.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else care to address this? Yes, sir.
Do you have a question?
Come up and identify yourself, please.
I don't want to talk loud enough, but I don't need a mic.
The people at home want to hear you, so you need the mic.
Is this close enough?
All right.
All right, listen. What are these people that are getting, the out-of-towners that are getting moorings right in front of our island? Like evidently, I don't know, I might need to be corrected, but I hear Falmouth and Sandwich have moorings out there. That we're renting them the moorings, correct?
That's what Town Manager told us.
Correct? What do those towns charge for moorings? And what are we charging for moorings?
Wayne?
Can't get the mic to come on. The town of Sandwich and the town of Falmouth do not have moorings through us. It's individual residents from those towns.
Oh, I thought he was referring to, you're referring to individual residents, correct? No?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's how I interpreted it. So yes, out-of-towners do in fact have moorings.
Correct. What do those moorings cost?
The same as they do a resident. Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you're getting a mooring in Sandwich or Falmouth, what does Falmouth and Sandwich charge for the mooring, and what are we charging for the mooring?
I don't know that.
I'm not sure what that has to do with the parking.
Okay, I can tell.
The purpose of the hearing is whether we should restrict the parking.
We should do something with the parking.
We're having a different conversation later on about mooring rules and regulations. That's not germane for tonight.
Okay, all right.
By the way, that study is underway.
Thank you.
We'll let that slide. Now about the boats on the rocks, I have pictures that they're piggybacking dinghies on top of one another on the rocks. There's boats that have been there, there's, a sailfish has been under the water, under the ground all summer long, never been removed. It's a hazard. Why are they allowed to piggyback dinghies on top of one another?
Okay, again, we're doing parking tonight. We'll deal with...
Okay, so it's just about parking?
All this, all your hearing is about, is about parking.
Cool.
All right? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else care to? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jane Concanon, I live on Wisconsin Island, and parking on the causeway has gone back for many years. We've written many times to all of you people about the parking. We know that we have nitrate overloading that goes into our bay and our wetlands. We also know that road runoff causes the nitrate overloading that goes into that marsh. When you put in the road, and we put the water in, and then you redid the road, it was made wider. And then the town helped put in some Rosa Bugosa, which we asked for to help to block that. Every single year now, Town of Mashpee sends down somebody with a brush cutter, and they cut it all down so that everybody can park there. And it causes road runoff. But we're very, very strict about our septic systems and our Title V's, but we've got road runoff going, and we're encouraging all these people. And I just talked to a man yesterday from Falmouth, he put in to get a mooring, this is an aside, and he got his mooring in two weeks, the ball is in the water now. And I just found this out. And they will continue to do this for as much as they need to do. That's just an aside. But the parking is horrendous. You've got these huge trucks, you've got the Cohoggers, you've got people that just want to go to the beach and they don't need a sticker, they can bring their dog down. You've got people that get picked up by other boats that are coming over to, so they can go over to Washburn's Island, so they park there. There's people from everywhere, and it's dangerous. It's, we've always addressed it as dangerous. And I could go back in our Wisconsin Island Association book and show you letter upon letter upon letter that we have sent to you regarding this road runoff and how dangerous it is. So I, you, that's it, that's it.
Did I need to say anything else?
Chill, oh, chill, it's on the causeway.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Eric?
My name is Patricia Colala. I live at 15 Bayview. I live at 15 Bayview, Wisconsin Island, as a summer resident and actual, actually weekends in the off-season as well. Yes, I'm very concerned about the parking, but as my neighbor, Mr. Filani, just mentioned that the boats on the beach, the dinghies, the rowboats, the rubber rafts, and you said that it's not relevant to the parking, but it is relevant to the parking because people are using these rowboats, dinghies, rafts that are piled on top of each other, three and four now, to Cohog or, you know, clam are just using them for recreation. And of course, they are parking there. And again, as my husband mentioned, I very often look at the stickers. And I can tell you that the majority of the stickers are Falmouth residents, also Sandwich residents, are out-of-towners, very few are Mashpee residents. So I do think the dinghies on the beach impact the parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
She doesn't live there. She doesn't live on Wisconsin Island.
Hi, Mary Wigan, 35, Ashument Road. So I'm sorry, I have to ask a basic question about this. So if I, I'm a Mashpee resident, and if I have a shellfishing permit, how do I park in that area under the proposed changes?
The proposal is...
You would get a landing.
...permit, a resident sticker that would allow you to park there.
You'd be okay.
All right.
It would cost you $5 a year.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Sir?
Dave DeShulow, 57, Wisconsin Island Road. So my question is, is that considered a legal beach, that area in, at Lacoit Bay?
I'm not sure what the term means, frankly.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is if it is, isn't there a regulation of how far boats can come in with motors?
No, unless there's a designated swim area, no. The Harbor Master can designate somebody a swim area and keep motorized boats out, but not...
Because there is a buoy out there that says family area, so that's just my question.
There would have to be a swim area designation.
Okay.
I, I do understand your point, Dave, and I heard the other comments as well, and I think it's fair to say that there are some folks that are parking there with no permit that are going to that makeshift beach.
Thank you.
Ed Locke, 61, Wisconsin Island Road. There's so many cars parked along the causeway, and at least a third of those cars are people that are going to the boatyard and taking their boats from the boatyard, and they're taking up spaces for residents that want to go to the beach. That beach was deeded to the town about 15, I'm going to say 19, I'm going to say 1947, '48. One property owner, all, all the houses from the beach up to my house was all one parcel. It was subdivided, and the owner gave the town the beach, deeded the beach rights to the town, provided they kept it a beach area in perpetuity. And we get down there, you get commercial diggers down there all the time, you know, hauling out shellfish, messing up the water, you know? It's a small beach. Ever since, when they put the road in, like I've been down there since 1964, and before the road was built, when they built it, they took half the beach away. That was a beautiful beach before then. There were no moorings. I had the first mooring down there 55 years ago. My boat was the only boat moored down there, and the beach was beautiful. And now it's been overrun by everybody, not just the local residents. You know, we pay taxes and we don't get full use of the beach.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion made.
Second.
Close the public hearing, move in second, is it all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Is there a desired motion anyone care to make on the matter at hand on whether to restrict Wisconsin Island causeway to resident parking only?
I think we need to.
And do we want to have, do we want to have anything about hours of operation? We've closed the public hearing. What's the recommendation?
It all depends on whether or not the board wants to go with the hours or the dates of the other landings, which I believe is mid-June to Labor Day. I'm not saying you have to, I'm just saying that's what our other landings are.
I think they all should be the same, more or less. I mean, why can't...
And that would limit the parking?
That way, that way, they can be patrolled. And no overnight, like the others. We don't let overnight parking at the others either.
Do we not?
Do we?
I think we do.
Yeah.
You know, I think one thing that the last gentleman had brought up was that this was given to the town, and if you're right, and it designated as a beach, I think we ought to identify if this was a beach or if it's a, if it's a boat landing. I think that's one of the most important things to find out because it may restrict the use of boats and parking there, you know, other than for bathing, sunbathing or swimming.
Right.
Maybe we need to be looking at that.
I certainly appreciated the gentleman's comments, and I was not here in 1947. I was not, I was not born yet.
So it was just, that beach was specifically given to the town, and he kept his opinion...
Okay, well, that we can review separately, and the Harbor Master has authority to deal with that.
And I'm not doubting that. What I would say to the board, and I know you probably don't want to continue this one more time, but I...
No.
Because I think, I know where you're headed. It's just, it would be nice to get some information relative to the beach and to some other information from the Harbor Master and from those here at Town Hall. And then if you would permit me to continue one more time, and then I'll come back.
The public hearing's closed, so we can defer. What if we did this? What if we deferred action awaiting a recommendation on time of year and hours?
Right.
From the manager for the 19th. But clearly, the, clearly, the consensus that's building here is that we will restrict this to public, to residential parking only, the details of which we can vote on on the 19th.
That would be great.
Okay.
And also, maybe you could have a conversation with the Harbor Master's office about what to do about the access, the boating access on the beach. I'll just point out to everybody, road widening may have been an issue, but over the last 50 years, sea level's rising too, squeezing all the beaches, it's not just the road. There's less beach there because there's less water, there's less beach and more water. And that's gonna get worse. So, all right. So we'll defer final action, but I think you can all leave here tonight, knowing that the intention is we're gonna do a resident-only restriction effective next summer, given the lateness of the year and the transitional needs to notify people. And we'll do a vote on specifics of the time permitted and the overnight issue on the 19th.
Great.
But Andrew, just, I know it's not public, but if it becomes a beach situation, is that gonna extend that? Are you looking into it further?
No. No, we will, we will vote on residential restriction on the 19th.
The assistant manager would like to grab their names and phone numbers.
Okay, if everybody could let Wayne know on your way out the door how to get ahold of you, we'll contact you with what we're doing. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Under communication correspondence...
If you're gonna continue, you should let people know when...
We close the public hearing.
We close the public hearing.
We close the public hearing, and we're going to take action on a recommendation on the 19th.
Oh, my lordy.
Can we ask everybody to move out of the, out to the hall, take your conversations out?
Excuse me.
Hello?
Excuse me. Can, can everybody just talk outside?
You're welcome to stay, but if you want to talk, you gotta leave. You don't have to go home, but you can't stay here.
Okay, let's move it along.
You could have banged that gavel.
Never mind.
All right.
I know, exactly. Okay.
All right, we're gonna move on to communications correspondence.
No, I'm good.
Anybody got anything? I did get a note from someone about the need to move forward, and the wastewater shall circulate that to the board as part of next, our next meeting packet. Move on to new business then. Discussion and approval of acceptance of resignation from the Conservation Commission Associate Member Stephanie Simpson. We have communication from our conservation agent who's putting forward the note that the, Ms. Simpson told him he was, she was resigning. He has been unsuccessful in getting her to provide a written letter to that effect, and there has been a period of great absence. And so he's recommending to us that we accept the record, the verbal resignation from Ms. Simpson.
So moved.
Take a motion that we accept the resignation and...
Okay. Tom Ambrose and Carol seconded.
Yep.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, can we post the vacancy, please? All right, next...
And that's just accepted, no letter?
Exactly.
Yeah, we didn't get a letter, so we got, we're not given a letter. Next is a discussion of planning board correspondence, a recommendation from the town planner for the adoption of an amended policy regarding road layouts that I believe reflected the conversations from the planning board meeting back in June. Is there anything beyond what's in the memo that, if no, you don't have to say anything. So the memo lays it out, we've got a recommended policy. Any questions the board has?
No.
Make a motion, or a motion to accept the amended policy, road layout policy?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. A memo that we are declassifying pursuant to our policy. I went over the executive session meeting minutes with the administrative assistant a couple of weeks ago, and we are declassifying executive session minutes from October 31, 2016, November 14, 2016, April 24, 2017, and February 11, 2019. So just notice to that effect, those are available for posting. Do we need a vote on that? I don't think so.
No.
I don't, I'm not aware.
Next, we have a number of special event, signed permits, church without walls. Is anyone here? So we've got a request for the Mashpee Baptist Church, utilize the community park gazebo Wednesday, August 28, 6:30 to 8:30. And is there anything else you want to let us know, or does this pretty much cover it?
Yeah, it's pretty much covered, and I'll pay for certain areas.
Okay, great. So everything's in, and the only recommendation is, you know, to clean up the facility afterwards.
I make a motion to accept the special event application for church without walls.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll say. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is the Ruck Not Your Ordinary 5K. So South Gate Beach for Heroes in Transition, September 29, 4 to 6. Nicole, how are you?
Good chance to advertise.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you for having me on behalf of Heroes in Transition, as this would be our fourth annual Ruck for Hit on the Beach. As you can see in the paperwork, we don't do any food. We start right after the Patriots win their game, and we will finish just before the sun sets, and there are very few signs. We just use them in the beginning so people know where to park and where to go. We'll take those down at the end. We'll be in and out, you know, we set up at about 3 o'clock, and we'll finish no later than 6.
Okay. It's a great event, and, you know, answer to the community for years.
I make a motion to accept the application for Ruck for Hit, Not Your Ordinary 5K.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. A temporary signed permit.
Oh, how'd you do?
Go back, come on up. So Cape Cod Collaborative, we gave you a signed permit last time?
You did, thank you.
How'd you do?
How'd you do?
We did okay. We got five responses from the different Mashpee signs. We're not sure which signs. We have one at the middle school, as well as the one that we put out near the police station, so it's doing well. I did take it down on the second. Like to request that I can put it back up again. We're kind of getting to that point now, we're a couple of weeks away from school starting, so.
Okay. So you're looking forward for, for which, what are the dates?
Can I do another 10 days? Hope you're right.
By me.
Same location.
That's fine.
Same location.
Same location's fine. I make a motion that we accept the Cape Cod Collaborative, requesting two signs.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Want to mention on the TV with all the viewers that what your rates are?
Yes, we've actually just increased our rates for large bus drivers, $24 an hour.
Oh gee.
We're offering some incentives for fully trained and licensed drivers at this point.
Excellent.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're on to draft two of the October 21 town meeting warrant. So I think that there were a number of things that we asked to get some additional information on, so maybe we can jump to those. You, Rodney, do you want us to put any of the routine stuff on, voted on tonight? Does that help you, or you want to wait till the 19th?
Okay.
Okay.
If you could vote on...
Actually, we can.
There's a lot in here, I think that we can put aside.
We can, I think we can go through it.
All right, so Article 1, there's an internal transfer around some bond issue. We had no questions about that last time. So I want to make a motion to include Article 1.
Motion approved, Article 1.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Article 2, previously, bills from a prior fiscal year.
Yes.
So is there a motion to include?
Approve Article 2.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And we're writing these articles in there, right?
Yes.
Well, they'll...
Just so we don't...
Yes.
You gotta write them in.
One, two.
As we go.
Yep. Third one is accepting property in exchange for tax delinquency. We had no issue with that last week.
Yep.
Accept Article 3.
Second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Article 4 is the stormwater discharge NPDS bylaw that comply with our federal permit.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Accept Article 4.
Any second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
You good there, Wayne?
On that Article 4, does that, how does that affect pre-existing storm drains?
Well, they should be checked, right?
This would make it, this would make it, give us the ability to penalize any illegal discharge of wastewater to a municipal stormwater conveyance.
Is that wastewater or stormwater?
It would be illicit connections and discharges, so any unpermitted illegal connection to a municipal system, whether it's, there's no grandfathering of it. Article 5 on page, did you approve 4?
No.
Yes, we did.
One through 4 has been approved.
Three, page 3.
It's the environment...
Article 5 on page 9. 9 is the polystyrene product ban. We actually voted to put this on last week.
Yes, we did. So we should accept.
So, wow.
Article 5.
We did.
Uh huh.
Okay, so Article 9.
Article 5.
Article 5 on page 9, thank you. To, is there a motion to include it in the warrant?
Mm-hmm.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Is it 4 to 0 on all?
Yes, so far, no dissent.
Yep, all the same.
I'm a big happy family.
He's caught up now.
Number 6 is the plastic straws.
Plastic straw ban, is there a motion to include it?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Number 7?
Article 7 is the 10% transfer requirements for CPC.
Approve Article 7.
Is there a second?
Wait.
Article, page 13, it's the 10% required.
Let me make sure.
So is there, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Article, what would that be, 8?
8.
8 was the $40,000...
Lacoit Bay Boat Run.
For complete the Lacoit Bay upgrade.
Let's approve Article 8.
Is there a second?
Just for service.
Second?
I was just...
It's 40 grand to complete the upgrade of the...
What page were you on?
We're on page 13, bottom.
13, bottom.
So we are.
Yes, second.
There's a second. All right, all, any discussion? All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Next one is $100,000 CPC money for the purchase of affordable housing property at 12 Cypress Circle.
I make a motion to approve Article 9 on the warrant.
Second.
John seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next one is the sewer article for 1.64 million for the design of the sewer system.
I make a motion to pull Article 10.
I would suggest that it's premature to do so. If we're gonna have a conversation about what we're gonna, we're gonna do on the, with the base side, whether it includes the east side of town or not is relevant to whether we proceed with this or not.
Well, I, I don't think we should be spending that kind of money on something that we don't know.
Well, how are you gonna find out?
Well, we need to have conversations.
Well, I think, at worst case, I think the article has an issue because it's designated for a specific reason.
I agree.
That's my problem. So I don't...
That's my problem.
It's, if the money was going into sewer, you know, into a sewer kitty, that's different. That's, but right now, this is actually going to a specific phase, but we don't know what that next phase is.
Yes, we do. I mean, look...
We don't know what we're doing, Andrew.
No, we do, Carol, okay? We absolutely...
And this Article 10 says a collection system designed to complete the design of the first phase.
Yep. Read your plan. You've got a, you've got a plan that the town voted on.
I think we should say this money won for May.
Why?
Because it's money.
You know what, that's, you know what, we have been going around in circles, it's like...
Baby steps.
We can't, we can't do it in the fall because it's a money article.
We'll be able to do it.
And then we don't do it in May because somebody's afraid that they got an election coming up.
We will be able to.
They don't want to talk about it in May. So you've got, you know, you've got this negative do-loop that we continue to go through, and there's always a reason. If you don't want it, if you don't want it at the...
Let's take a vote of who's gonna put it on.
All right, you know what, but before you do that, before you do that, before I call for a vote, and I'm happy to have a vote, I want to give you this, okay? These are the minutes from this board, December 1, 2014, okay? From which I quote, "Based on the attached memo and discussion at a workshop November 25, 2014, it's recommended that the board take action on the following motion. Board of Selectmen determines that due to recent changes in regulation of wastewater management options and the adoption of adaptive management plan, management approach to wastewater in Mashpee is now in the best interest of the citizens of Mashpee. The town remain the entity responsible for wastewater management. To that end, the Board of Selectmen no longer support transfer of wastewater management responsibility to the Mashpee Water District. And further, the Board of Selectmen work cooperatively with the Mashpee Water District Commissioners to ensure the town remains the responsible entity." I made the motion. That was approved unanimously, 5-0. The only two members of the board that are still currently here, Carol, you and me. And so when we talk about the fact that, well, we don't know who's gonna do it, and we don't have a plan, we voted five years ago, who was gonna do it? We were. If you want to rescind that, go ahead and try it. But we have a plan that we voted to support as a board. It's been approved by state and local regulators, county regulators, and so if we don't have the stones to go ahead and do it, then let's say we're not gonna do it. But to say we don't know what we're doing, we don't know what Phase 1 is, and we don't know who's gonna do it, is just patently wrong. If you don't want to do it, then say you don't want to do it, and step to the sidelines.
I want to remove Article 10. That's what the issue is right now for the warrant. Do I have a second?
You're not running the meeting. Is there a second?
Can we have further conversation?
Because I want to, I would like to make, Mark, can I make another motion?
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on, the motion is, did not yet second it.
So, so here's the thing.
And we're having a discussion about the motion.
And I maybe get voice in this second on this. Here, here we have, we just had an individual here, we're talking about utilizing the base, which has been sitting there all along, and I've been hoping that something would come, and I understand that it may not be able to take all of the town's wastewater. I get it. But, that doesn't mean that it can't, because there's also the possibility of expansion. And I said, these, things are a lot different today, just tonight.
More five years ago.
As they were in 2014. We're at 2019, and we just came up with a plan from an engineer. We have four other towns that are willing to jump on, willing to expand the plant, and possibly, we have the use of that for wastewater, waste treatment. Whether it happens or not, I don't know. This is, we're asking for specific funds here. I, I'd just as soon hold it. I don't see why we have to do it. I think, I think we owe it to the residents to find out where we're going, and I mean all the residents, I don't mean the abutists.
That's right.
I mean, are we gonna use this facility?
Everybody needs to be on board.
Or do we just dig a hole, or, or do we go up to the base where there, it's just an easier plan and discharge is there? What I like about the base is the discharge is there.
My, my, my point back to you, Tom, would be, A, after five years of the time we said we were gonna proceed with this, and longer since the Board of Selectmen adopted the plan that we're operating on there. Why, if, what's the rush to yank this article tonight, when if you really wanna say, well, we're gonna have some conversation about whether we're going to the base, or whether we're gonna stick with our current plan? You heard tonight that the plan that Mr. Leonard presented in its first iteration doesn't address the area that's proposed to be treated, uh, in the entire Mashpee River System, unless we change it. So, why, you know, I, I gotta tell you, I, I, I hear we need to talk about it more, and marry that with the action that we're in a rush to pull something off the warrant that does not have to be finalized for a month, to just simply be...
I just...
Picking the can down the road again. I don't know why you're in such a hurry to take something off the table, when if you wanna enter into a conversation, a good faith conversation about what we're gonna do, I don't know why you have to disarm the one thing we said we were gonna do before we have that conversation. I just, the, the last five years have taught me anything, is that we will take every question, every uncertainty, every nuance that comes up, and use it as a justification to do not a goddamn thing, and I'm tired of it. You listen to the, you listen to Howes come in here two weeks ago and tell you he had the worst estuaries on Cape Cod, and the first thing we do is say, oh, we're not fond of that.
All right, can I, can I add something here? So, I, I agree with what everybody's saying here, but I also think, um, I think it might be hasty to pull.
Oh, I, I know.
In my opinion, I think actually if we, I would like to propose that we revise it, um, but I can't discuss that until, because we already have a motion on, on the floor.
Well, the motion has not yet been seconded. So, is there a mo, is there a second in Mr. Sherman's motion? I hear none. Do you care to make another motion?
So, I'd like to make a, another motion to strike, uh, and I, obviously, I'm gonna look for legal assistance as far as the, the verbiage of, if this would be correct, but to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the available funds of 1.1 million, $640,000 to the Sewer Commission Collection System, or strike that and maybe make it to the Town of Mashpee Wastewater Commission, or whatever.
You're looking to create a reserve fund to put money into future design.
So, assign money, I think we need to do that, but we don't know where and how we're gonna utilize that money yet. I just don't think we have all the facts. So, I think putting the money away in a designated fund, again, I'm not the, the expert of what that category is, but I'm very comfortable with that, putting the money away into a fund that can be used for wastewater, when we know exactly how it should be used. So, that would be my motion, but that would be...
It needs redrafting.
It needs redrafting as far as...
The concept behind your motion is put money into, in an equal amount into a reserve fund for future design.
Until we, right, deem whatever that is.
I see what you're asking.
You've got that word in, future design.
You remove it after it says...
That bothers me.
After it says the Commission, Sewer Commission Collection System Design Account, and strike the rest of it to get rid of, to, to complete the design of the first phase of the sewer collection system to be connected to the municipal wastewater treatment plant, to be located adjacent to the town's solid waste transfer station, or make any other action related to it. So, if you strike that, that money goes into a design system, and then we can come back and address it when this, when we have a plan of where it's gonna go.
Right.
A definitive plan.
And if it's not, uh, Commission Collection System Design Account, I'm okay with it being Mashpee Water Treatment, uh, Fund, or whatever we...
You're looking for some refined language from Town Council and Town Manager.
Correct.
Right.
And so, it's basically striking the bottom three lines for the most part, leaving the top line and substituting...
Right.
And... Does that make sense?
I, I...
So, but I don't think there's a, I don't think we vote on it until we know the, the refined language.
At the moment, so, why don't we do this, since it sits here today in limbo? We haven't decided to put it on, we chose not to take it off. Can we get language to look at as part of the next draft? That would effectuate Mr. Cotton's motion.
I just need a clear understanding in terms of the spirit and the intent of your article.
Intent, as I understand it, if I could try and rephrase.
I'll reword it right now. To, again, the first line, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer available funds of $1 million, $640,000 to wastewater treatment, uh, whatever..."
System design?
System design, it doesn't, it, whatever, sewer account, we have to set up an account?
We may have to.
I, I mean, don't we have to set up an account in this?
Yeah, why don't we just start it with the...
We, we have a lot of expenditures that are gonna come up in wastewater.
Do you wanna leave the language first phase, or change it?
No, no.
You're suggesting you stop it after whatever the, whatever the account title is.
If the money's in the, in the account, we can use it for appropriation for wastewater.
Um, you'll have language at your next meeting, um, and it won't be written by me, it'll be written by Council.
Hey, we don't have to take a formal vote on that, it's something we'll take under consideration next time. The next article is, um, similar, uh, $840,000 treatment plan, um, is the same, we're gonna have the same discussion?
Yeah, I, I have the same, I have no problem with, you know, assigning or, you know, reassigning funds, but again, we, I don't, I don't know, and how can I put a warrant article out there, and if I'm asked by the public, I can't explain it. I don't know. I, we don't know what we don't know. I mean...
So, I...
Base Cape Cod just clarified, you know what, they're talking about 200,000, you know, system, right? That doesn't affect our first phase, but could it?
I make a motion...
Yes.
To pull Article 11.
There's a motion to pull it. Is there a second? Hearing none, is there an alternative?
I'm gonna second that. I'm gonna second that motion.
Okay. All right, so the motion was made and seconded. I would argue if we're gonna do it with the one side, we should do it with the other side, and at least consider, have an alternative available to us to do what John suggested for the previous article for the amount of money involved in this one.
I mean, we're talk, I mean, even if we combine both articles, we're still talking, it's such a small number...
2.4 million dollars.
I mean, I, I, not to say it's a small number, but considering we're talking 450 million for wastewater, you know, and it's...
All right, there's a motion and a second. Call for a roll call. Carol?
Yes, to pull it.
John?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
All right, so it's not pulled. Can we get a alternative, and it's not, obviously, it's not pulled, it's not gonna get included at the moment either. Um, so, can we get a proposal that's similar in spirit to the one that we're doing for the prior one, and we'll take this up again when we take up Draft Three? Article, I don't know what article this is.
Twelve.
No, twelve?
No, are you leaving that as-is?
No.
We're gonna continue with...
I'd like to see an alternative that basically puts that amount of money in a design, in a design account, that...
And again, that's striking Phase One?
Again, strike everything after account.
Right.
So, it's the same as the article before?
None, right. Non-descript with the intent of Article Ten.
Right.
And at least then we can make a decision at that point.
Make a decision later. Um, next one is to create a part-time assistant health agent position to enforce the requirements of, uh, short-term rental regulations by the Board Health, just the manager.
I recommend that this be pulled, and you should have, uh, an alternative to consider to add.
Oh, really?
Okay.
Okay. Is that later on?
Is that in the...
It should be in your packet.
The supplementals?
That was in the supplementals.
Can you tell me just briefly, real quickly, where do we stand on that? Are there, are there any funds being collected?
Yes. We don't know yet, the first, the rental tax went into effect July 1, the first remittance from state to, or from the taxpayer to the state is due August 8, and then we get, uh, towns will get notice somewhat later on down in the fall.
So, but it's in effect.
We don't know yet, that would be the short answer. We will by town meeting.
Do we have registered units in the, within the town?
There were, I think there was language in here, there's 600 people filed, um, short-term rental notification under the state law. I think I read that in, in the packet somewhere.
In our town?
In Madison. All right, so there's a recommendation to pull this article?
Yes, sir, but there's also an alternative to consider to add.
At the end. All right, is there a motion to pull this article?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
No? All right, no, all in support?
Are we gonna make the next Article 12?
I don't know. They'll, they can figure out the numbers.
You wanna make the next Article 12, since the other one doesn't exist?
Bottom of page 15, um, appropriate a sum of money to enable the Board of Health to contract with someone to, uh, help them identify any short-term rentals that are not currently registered or future registered with the town.
So moved.
Second?
Approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, the following one is 37,950, 37,950 from the Waterways Improvement Fund to the Propenasset Approach Channel Account.
I make a motion to add Article 13.
Motion made, is there a second? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. The next one, I had questions about, um, I, I had fairly extensive back and forth with, uh, Mr. Bates. I was, kinda thought he was gonna be here today. Um, but, this was, uh, the purpose for this article, as Mr. Bates explained to me, was to have money in an account that this town could cite as a match
Match for grants.
For a future state grant, without having to wait for town meeting to designate the money for a specific project.
Well, I think that sometimes comes up, and they have to wait.
I don't think that this accomplishes their goal, because once it goes into a reserve account like this, it still needs to get voted on as a specific project by town meeting for the money to be spent for a specific purpose. So, while it moves money out of the Waterways Account, it doesn't give them the ability, like the Affordable Housing Trust, to act without a town meeting authorization. But, I don't think it accomplishes their goals.
Is there another way?
Ken and I went around in circles on this.
Should we suspend this for until the next?
Well, I guess the question is, the way I left it with him and you, I thought, was, if Council wants to tell me I'm wrong, I'll stand down. If Council doesn't wanna tell me I'm wrong, there's a point to this.
Okay, so we'll question that one.
So, could we get a read for the 19th?
I can get a read on that.
You can do that without inviting him back, that'd be good.
So, that's the middle of page 16.
You were all set after listening to him.
I disagreed with him, but he kept going.
Okay, Article 15.
So, we're calling that article 14, just in case.
We're gonna hold that one for now, but...
That's a hold.
We need an answer.
So, so why are we, why are we holding that money?
Because...
It may be used for, for matching funds.
Here's my word.
Well, there's other funding available, possibly, whether you have other funds.
Right, but then they don't wanna have to wait for town meetings. But, no matter what you do, you have to go to town meeting.
Right, but the only thing that Brian, Dr. Howes said, is that the only reason that the, the outer part of the Propenasset Bay is healthy is because of the dredging that's taking place.
But, that's not, they're not, they're looking for other money to do other stuff.
It's not for that project.
It wasn't for that project. We just, so, what my concern is, frankly, is A, it doesn't accomplish what they wanted it to, and B, it's draining down the Waterways Improvement Fund, and it's gonna make that look artificially low, and the money's constrained.
The money will be there, okay.
The money's constrained, and then sometimes we use Waterways Improvement Fund for projects, funding equipment, things that don't always meet the desires of the Waterways Commission, and I am concerned that it's, of course, socking away money, so we can't do that in the future, to no particular end.
Okay.
I don't, but I, on this one here, I don't wanna run into a situation like we did this year. I know it was a dredge issue, but I don't thought there'd be a funding issue, um, and not have that dredged in the property.
Right, but again, their, their purpose was so they didn't have to go to town meeting for authorization for a specific project, and I don't believe there's any way they can get around that. So, I don't see the point, if that's the case. But, if Council tells me I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
Bottom of page 16.
Bottom one, I don't get this one.
The article will create and fund an account that will make the process easier to manage for the engineering permitting and dredging, dredging associated expenses for the town.
But again...
It's Waterways.
I understand that, but I, I, I'm not sure what they're trying to accomplish here, with, with...
Like what happened this past year, this gives them the money in the account...
This might be more what you were talking about, Tom.
To get what Tom was talking about. We needed to get...
Those funds readily...
Those funds right available, and we couldn't get them.
But again, I don't think you can transfer it out of...
But he's saying it...
I know what he's saying, the intent is to make it easier, I don't know that the mechanics work.
Let us check with Council, and I know you don't wanna hear this, but, uh, maybe have Mr. Bates come in at the next meeting.
That's fine, and I understand what he's trying to do.
Well, he's saying permitting dredging.
I understand that, but if it's not legal, then it doesn't have any effect.
Let me check with legal.
On both of those.
On both of them.
On both of those, and we'll...
Move on.
Invite Mr. Bates in.
You ready for?
This is the one, and Carol, the, the issue on the dredging at the mouth of the Propenasset Bay was not a fu, funding issue. The money was in place. It was, they redirected the dredge to another location.
That's right, that's right. Mechanics, you're right.
Right. So, let's hold the next one, cause it's related to the previous one.
It's the same thing, Article 16. Okay, so jump down to 18.
All right, the next are a series of, uh, technical changes to the conservation bylaw, so the first one, um, would be a regulatory change.
Make a motion to accept Article 18.
Is there a second? It's just updating our regs to correspond to new state rules.
I got you, second.
All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, the next one, uh, would be replacing, uh, the words Administrative Review Level One with a, the words a permit, because we don't have a, that level anymore.
I make a motion, make a motion to accept Article 18.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Next is, um, some language about, um, when an applicant has to come in...
Right, to work.
For a permit.
To request work. Make a motion to accept Article 19.
Is there a second?
It's just language.
It's language pertaining to when an applicant has to do something on property not owned by them. So, how they get a permit application for the Conservation Commission, like take a hazards tree down.
Right now, it's just a, they're gonna just say, okay, it's after this.
I, second.
Yes.
All right, motion made and seconded?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Next is a change of the words Significant Accumulative Effect, um, to Adverse Impacts.
Accept Article 20.
Motion made to include it in the warrant, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, next changes pre-existing conditions to existing conditions.
The phrase.
Yeah. Is there a motion to include?
Include Article 21.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, uh, next is, um, put a definition of adverse impacts, um, to wetlands, values, and resource areas. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion approved.
All right, John's made a second, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Anyone oppose? No, okay. Next would be a reference change to the state, to change it from, uh, Executive, uh, in Office of Energy Environmental Affairs to the new name Executive Office of Energy Environmental Affairs.
Motion approves.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, next is a, uh, change in the bylaws to take away the $300 limit per incident and allow it to be established by the Board of Selectmen, so we would be setting penalty levels in the future.
Do we have to state what the penalty will be?
We'd have to do it through a regulation. It gives us the Board of Selectmen the ability to do it.
But shouldn't it be in here that we do it?
Well, it says not to exceed $300.
It's removing that, not to exceed $300, and saying...
So, we can say 500?
We could say whatever we want. We could say $10.
Shouldn't we say it now?
Well, the whole point, I think, was so that it could be updated over time, without having to go to town meeting through a public hearing process.
Oh, okay, all right.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to add 20, Article 24.
All right, the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Second, yes.
Which one, where, where?
We are on the bottom of page 19.
It's by Conservation submitted it.
So it takes up the hard number that's in the regs and the bylaw and allows the board of selectmen to set penalty numbers.
Not to exceed?
Doesn't say not to exceed, it just says, it's removing the not to exceed 300 and allowing us to make a future decision on penalty amounts.
So Conservation can have some more teeth.
No limit.
Could have more teeth.
Article 25.
Yes, okay. All right, so that's on. Next is a, the zoning bylaw for accessory apartments. There was a redraft that was provided...
It's in your packet.
In the packet, it was provided to the planning board last week. The intention is to not take any action on this tonight, so that the planning board can take it up at their meeting on Wednesday, right, Mary?
Yes, at 6:00.
Okay, and then we'll get some input back from the planning board before we settle on language on the 19th and thereafter. So we're just gonna, hold this out of deference to the planning board's review.
Fight that.
Good process, ain't Mary? Next is...
Page 22, right?
Yeah, page 22.
Number 26.
Accessory dwelling units, again, should we hold this one, is this part of the broader review? Evan?
Yeah, that's... Originally, there are three articles submitted. One was a change in the definitions of accessory apartment, one altered the table of uses, and the other altered the section that specifically provided the criteria for approval of an accessory apartment. The amendment that was drafted and is probably included in the packet that was provided the planning board and will be discussed Wednesday night was only specific to one of those three articles, to the big substance, the...
So this one was submitted by the planning board, is there any reason for us not to place it at this point?
The...
Process, or should we just hold it?
Hold it.
Let's just hold it.
I like holding.
We'll hold them all, we'll hold them all.
The planning board just had their conversation, right.
That's fine. All right, next is...
27.
27, from Natural Resources, the bylaw of ban jet skis on a Schuman Pond per the request of the town of Falmouth.
I make a motion to add 27.
Is there a second? I'll second it. So Falmouth has imposed this ban, they can't enforce it without us doing our side.
On our side, right.
Is there any discussion?
Has there been issues reported on Schuman Pond, is that the, is that the reason why this came up?
My understanding is just an enforcement issue, because it's banned on one side and on the other.
So Mashpee people are riding their jet skis into the Falmouth side.
So how many, how many houses are in the Falmouth side versus the Mashpee side? Is it equal, or is a smaller portion in Falmouth?
Much smaller in Falmouth.
Right, so have we had any conversation from homeowners in the Mashpee side?
I can't speak for that, because I didn't...
Why don't we have the Natural Resources come in?
I didn't submit the article.
I don't even know that they're aware of this, but they could come in and at least have...
I just haven't heard any issues at all, and I hate to...
Can we ask for a report from Natural Resources on what they see out there, what their recommendation is?
I'll get a full activity report from Natural Resources.
Sounds good.
And I'll have them come in at the next meeting.
Great.
Good.
Sounds like a plan.
28.
This would allow the board of selectmen to promulgate rules and regs around moorings.
I think we need to...
Interesting question.
Isn't it?
As opposed to...
Now it's a very interesting question.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
There were some good questions that come up tonight.
Yes, there was.
We got some things to...
Anyway, so this would give us the ability to make determinations on this.
Well...
Do you want to include it?
I, I do want to include that.
I do.
Motion approved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, motion made in second, and all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Last one is a petition article. Have we ever got information from council on whether this is properly formed and should be allowed on the warrant or not?
He says it's gotta be placed on the warrant.
Okay.
Is it legally formed? It's properly before town meeting, once it's placed on the warrant.
I don't want to get into all the details, but he said it's gotta go as is, and...
And voted on.
There, there may be some issues with it.
Okay. Okey doke.
All right, then we have a handful of Item 6, recommended alternative, additional articles, the first of which is a revision to the rental property bylaw. Do we want to, what's the difference between this and what was in our packet?
I'm sorry, where are you?
The suggested additional articles, we're done with the regular, with the second draft, so then there were...
There's three.
It's a small packets.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So basically, as I read this, it allows the Board of Health to set up rules and regulations around rentals...
Yes.
To comply with code.
Yes.
Any discussion? Do you want to have the Board of Health in? Or do you want to put it on, think about it before the 19th, we, first time we're seeing it?
I'd like to take a look at this, not take a decision.
Action, can we maybe have the Board of Health at least provide some information on...
Or, or the health agent.
Or the health agent, come in and talk to us.
I would agree, there's a lot of, a lot to take on here, I mean, for the, for the health department, so...
Yeah, but code compliance is important, so. Next is two companion pieces, and I'll let you speak to them. What do you want me to, what do you want to do?
Well, I think one of the companion pieces is referring to Joint Base Cape Cod.
Right, there's three pieces here, yeah.
So, I don't know where the board really wants to go with that, based on what you just approved tonight, or, or I should say, kept on the, the warrant.
To see if the town, can I read it? Should I read it? Do you want to read it?
The idea was, if, if you did pull those articles, which obviously you have not, but if you had, it, it provided an...
Even if we don't now.
Right, it, it was an alternative.
So the article says, to see if the town will vote to support Mashpee's participation in feasibility planning for a regional wastewater collection and treatment facility, Joint Base Cape Cod, to authorize town manager to negotiate and execute a memorandum of understanding with neighboring municipalities relative to joint development of plans for the design, construction, and operation of such regional wastewater collection, treatment facility, and further to raise and transfer and/or borrow the, and appropriate the sum of X to fund such further investigation and planning of this regional approach, including evaluation of options, conceptual design of wastewater collection, treatment and disposal facilities and related appurtenances, permitting requirements, and the requisite redrafting of the town's conference of wastewater management plans, associated notices of project change, and other related activities, if we take any other action there, too.
See, John, this is where your money, that...
It could, well, yeah, the money can go for this and/or anything else, but...
Well, the...
But, but do we have to have the money in there, or...
Well, the ballpark figure, which had not been validated yet, was $250, $300,000, and that very well may be...
Low.
Off, maybe low. And this was going to be proposed as an alternative in case those articles had been pulled.
So why don't we do this, I'd like to, you know, it's fair to keep this conversation going. Let's, if we can, my intention would be, maybe we have a special meeting next Monday, talk about the redrafts that you, that were suggested for the other articles, this, and get some feedback from you and your other managers to where everybody seems to be going, and make some decisions.
And I'm also just a little concerned as to what number we're gonna arrive at.
Let me, how many, how many feasibility studies do you think we're gonna have to have before we get to a plan? It's, I don't know...
Well, Joint Base Cape Cod is gonna be...
I mean, we've, I was waiting for one when I was on the advisory committee for, that was eight years ago.
Did you have one?
Finally, we got, we got a, the feasibility study that said, yes, it can support this, it's underutilized, and we're still talking about it, now we're talking about knocking it down. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know, it seems like we keep going.
I'd agree with having a special meeting to kind of vet some of this out.
I think we really need a lot more meetings.
Well...
But I mean, it's a start, I mean, with these articles specifically, these three plus the 2-1 hold? Is that your suggestion?
Yeah, and the other, yes, and the other two are to, as we talked about in the recommendation from the CPC committee, we'd recommended, and this is not from the CPC committee, by the way, the recommendation was to maintain the CPC at 3%. These two articles propose a change, a creation of a water infrastructure fund at 3% and a reduction of the CPC down to 1%. So that, in effect, we'd have the same property tax surcharge that Sandwich just adopted. They put 2 and 2 to come up with a 4%, this proposes 3 and 1, again, as a way to bankroll some money into an account that would be used for whatever we decide to do.
Well, you know, we're talking about all this money, I think we need our finance team to come in, too, at one of our meetings.
That's fine, our finance team has heard my comments, and John and I met with them back in March or April. I don't know if anybody else gave them comments. It needs some serious redrafting. Whether, when, and if it's ready, we're happy to look at it.
I did speak with them today after this discussion, and they're ready.
Okay.
Okay, that'd be good.
So anyway, I think maybe we should defer action on all of these until we have a little bit more conversation.
I think we should.
Just out of curiosity, too, is one of the, one of these, maybe it's all of them, they use municipal water infrastructure investment fund. Would that be the, the ideal fund to...
The term used for yours.
To name for the two that we talked about earlier?
That's a term of art from state statute, so when the water infrastructure bill was passed in 2016, it created this water interest, this statewide authorization, that if you adopted a provision of the general laws, you could do a special assessment that looked a lot like the CPC as a percentage of property tax collections above and beyond your levy limit, and that's what they called it. How we carried on our books, I think we'd have to look for...
I think, I think we need to have a...
I'm looking for some consistency where a general fund...
Yeah, the only thing I'm gonna just caution you on is, if the whiff passes and then the CPC fails that article, that's gonna result in a 3% increase on, so whatever they're paying for CPC now, double it.
Well, the town meeting gets to decide. It's not our call.
Yes.
So if they decide that's what they want to do...
But he's just letting you know, right.
They can do it. Or they can say no to both of them, or leave it alone.
What's happening with 2 and 2?
It's a proposal.
I don't think you're gonna get 3 and 1.
Anyway, well, it's...
I think you'd better go back to 2 and 1.
Anyway.
Or if I were 3 and 1.
So it's a proposal, and I don't think we're prepared to take it on tonight.
No, let's talk about this, let's have the finance committee come in.
Well, I think we need to talk about it.
We can schedule another meeting on wastewater, if people are available Monday night next. I propose we do it then.
Yeah, I'd rather do it and not have the clock ticked out.
Just have wastewater talked about.
Just wastewater.
Just wastewater.
So right now, let's plan a meeting Monday next, Monday next at 6:30.
Yep.
We can have the finance team, we can have a discussion of these articles, we can, what?
I'm the sewer commission.
You're here, come.
I know, I was invited to this meeting, and I couldn't say a word.
You were here to listen.
You'll be a full participant next Monday. We're not making decisions right now, we're trying to get things to lay out. I told you about this so that, so you could hear it. All right. All right. Next, do we have town managers, or any liaison reports?
The only thing I'll bring up is on the, the assembly delegates county level. We are going into a review of the charter, and I'd asked for comments, and there have been a few different... They're looking at the increase in the number of commissioners, or eliminating the commissioners altogether, and the assembly becomes the, each delegate would have a strong vote, and rather than, it, I don't know, it'd be a weighted vote or a non-weighted vote, but they're looking at different options, and it's all coming about, I don't know where everybody stands on this, but I was looking for input, and that...
What, should we...
Maybe meets on Wednesday, this Wednesday.
This coming Wednesday, well, speaking for me, I'd like to see a recall provision added to the county charter.
They're, they're all looking for that, that's already been brought up. But the problem is that with three members, if you have a recall, now you're, now you're in a bind. Who, who makes that decision? You know, if you have, go to the commissioners, now you have two people that vote, and if you're the stalemate, you're stuck.
Well, you could do it the way Mashpee does in our charter, which is you have a recall and then an election in the same event.
But there's still a period of time that goes by.
No, it'd be all simultaneous in one, in one series of votes.
Right.
I mean, there is language, so the one, last time we had a recall in Mashpee, in 1991, there was a, a vote on recalling, and the same ballot was a vote to elect someone to replace the recalled member.
Right.
It's all one night, no gap in service, so there's ways to do it.
There are ways.
You could do it like Fall River and recall the guy and then elect him in the same election.
Right, right. Well, and, and what I, what I had suggested was the possibility of using the chair of the assembly to step in and be the third vote, and, until they had time for an election.
But whatever the mechanics are, I think you really need one.
No, you do, there's no question.
Okay. Is there any talk about expanding the commissioners to five?
Yes, yes.
That'd be good.
That's, that's one of the, but it's a, it's a difficult election, it's a lot of ground to cover.
It is.
For, for a small salary, you know?
But it's almost impossible to do your business well if no two members of the board can talk to one another without violating the open meeting law.
You can't have, right, you can't have a conversation.
Can't have a conversation.
It's very difficult.
Yep.
Town manager updates if any.
Rodney, you have anything you want to update?
I do. Road closure and detour at Sampson's Mill Road beginning August 12th.
Plus the converter replacement?
Yes, for a, for a, no, a three-month period.
A three-month period?
However, it is not really gonna affect our traffic as much as, I, I don't want to use the word out-of-towners, but people that don't live in...
That's true.
Yeah. You had asked me to follow up regarding the South Cape Resort Association discussion, and we do have a discussion taking place, council will be present. That's next week? Okay, it is, it's coming up. The DPW garage, the, was awarded to Collins, I just want to say for the record, no relation.
So they're ready to go?
What's that?
That's, that's gonna happen? The project is underway?
Yes. The veterans' reserved parking.
Yes.
I want to thank the assistant manager and some other folks that worked diligently on that. What you have in your packet, or your supplemental packet tonight, is a proposed sign that would go in two spaces so designated across at the park, so that veterans would be able to park and have easy access.
Great idea, thank you.
Great sign, too.
And I also wanted to bring to the board's attention that we do have an expired intermittents, interminable agreement between the town and the water district. The water district would like to pay less, I would like them to pay more. And so I just want to make the board aware that Andy Marks and I are going to be engaging in some negotiations, and we will have a proposal before yourself, and...
Too Tommy, night was well spent.
Not, not with you yet.
And Andy Marks, I'm sure, will be bringing it before the water commission.
You guys can tell us you're actually having this.
And, oh, another important thing to mention is the host community agreement is gonna be held, this is Mashpee Holdings LLC, that's gonna be at Willow Bend on August 14th. And that's for the proposed location at 79 Echo Road. And I've already mentioned that the finance team is ready to give you an update, which will be at probably your special meeting Monday night. And the last thing I have is, the fire chief has worked diligently regarding this comprehensive emergency management plan, and given our microburst, and given hurricanes, and so on and so forth, I think we need to adopt it. I'm not asking you for a vote tonight, I'm just gonna be distributing it. This is kind of a model coming from the state. The only thing that we changed was, for the declaration of an emergency, I changed it from town manager to board of selectmen. That's the only thing that we changed from the model. And you, and if there was an emergency, you could call an emergency meeting and make that decision. So I would just ask that we have you review it, and at the 19th, I'd like you to affirm the plan.
Do we have the ability, the way you wrote it, to delegate that authority to you in the event something comes up?
We could word it that way.
You know, some, you know, you have a microburst, and you need to do it that day, and you can't get three of us together on a emergency basis.
If there's an imminent threat or...
Something like that.
Yes.
We've done it before, Wayne, by phone, to...
Right, but that doesn't comply.
I know, it doesn't, I know.
So anyway, some way to be able to be a little more nimble.
I think that's why they put the manager or mayor's...
Anyway, I just try and be a little more nimble.
It's easier one person than five.
Yes, exactly.
I can...
Play with it a little bit.
Tune in, yep, but anyway.
Okay, anything else? Okay, anything else?
That's, that's it.
I want to mention...
You had a couple things.
I did, I want to mention the Mashpee Night Out will be, at the Mashpee Police Department's, the Fourth Annual National Night Out will be done Tuesday, August sixth, five thirty to seven thirty, between the police department and the fire department, and there's a lot going on.
Okay, you want to bring up sign stuff?
Oh, and yes, on our sign, I'm gonna turn it back over to Rodney. We now have those little signs that go in the ground advertising other furniture stores and other things in town will now be, Rodney?
Subject to citations or warnings, we do have a ticket book.
So we're now, to be less cryptic, people, we've begun enforcement and removal and citations and financial penalties.
Which is consistent with the bylaw that was passed when last...
At town meeting.
Over a year ago. So people have been doing it and getting a free ride, that free ride's over, you can expect to get tickets if you're violating the sign policy.
First, first offense is a warning. Second is fifty.
I think it was fifty dollars.
And third is a hundred.
So anyway, people have been forewarned, they've had a nice grace period, now it's over.
I noticed this weekend, mon, actually this morning you drive through Mashpee, there wasn't one sign stuck in the ground advertising anything.
Okay, John, you have one thing you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, well, I, I just want to stress this, the night out.
Yes.
It's tomorrow night.
Yes.
So hopefully the public is well aware.
It is over social media, too.
Yeah, so, we're gonna get that out. It's, and I don't know if I need to bring up a motion to, it wasn't on the agenda, but...
No, just go ahead.
It's, it's in, it's, it has to do with wastewater and the whole thing, so, back on the topic, I think some meetings ago, I suggested that we look into the estimate of adding wastewater infrastructure to the construction on Route one fifty-one. That's gonna be, I think, planned for twenty twenty. So I was curious to see if we have any estimates, and I know that might be a, it, you know, it's a new thing for us, but if we are doing...
You suggested is doing what you are, what Orleans did, which put dry mains in when they redid twenty-eight.
So we don't have to dig it up again.
I mean, a main road like one fifty-one, that's a major construction.
That was brought up a long time ago.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah, but I never...
So could we add that to the next of conversation?
Yeah, the DPW director is fully aware, but, yes, I, I don't think it was anticipated to be in conflict, but it all depends on how fast each one of these are moving along.
Yeah, 'cause I know that was, we're talking about a year from now, the construction, I believe. So that means we need to have those funds available, and that might kind of go into this whole warrant allocation, in my mind.
Right down to the base.
Thank you.
And also tomorrow night is dropping, Community Help Center.
Yeah, those calls went out just before.
Yeah, they did.
Thank you for that.
Anybody got anything else? Hearing none?
Yeah, one more.
No.
One more.
Oh, you, okay.
One more.
Go.
So, so can we get a new microphone for the individuals that come to the podium?
We have a, we have a meeting on Thursday with MTV to discuss replacement of the audio system.
Good.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Sam?
Ah, yeah, Sam, stay there. Come forward. Sit down.
No, not you, Sam, you can come.
What's that? Sit down. Oh my God.
We just heard something to the grapevine.
Yeah, I...
And what is it?
I got a new job, I'm moving on.
And you're not gonna be here anymore.
I'll be, I'll be here, I'll come and sit in on your... Oh my God.
Wish nobody can deny.
Sam, in all seriousness, I think we all feel like you did a really good job on behalf of the public. You were diligent, honest, trustworthy.
And you said what we said.
And, and you were accurate in your reporting, and that's not always the case, and we appreciate it, and we'll miss you.
And we always knew when to start the meeting, just when you got here.
So thank you and good luck. Thank you. I'm the photographer for the Cape Cod side.
Hey! That one comes with a free frame.
Have you guys had Ryan?
So Ryan, no pressure. Blow bar. You said free.
Wow, you guys caught me by surprise. I almost didn't show up tonight. Oh, thanks.